So where is Castle Creek?
Right off of.
Off of Garrison.
Right here.
Over by Willowbrook.
Oh, that's right.
But Willowbrook and Castle Creek almost run, they run parallel and they almost run right, right into each other, you know, right with each other, you know? I mean, there's really no room for anything on that one side.
Yeah.
Of Willowbrook.
Right. There's not. There was actually, it was a, it was a hate strip.
Yeah.
On the one side, a one-foot strip to keep any connections to.
Yep.
Willowbrook.
Right? And there's that one house.
Yeah.
This is where this road is.
Right. Yep.
Well, the one good thing is.
You didn't go over meeting, did you? Or did you give the.
Yeah, in New York.
What meeting?
She proposed the meeting. She gave us his dates and ties. A little meeting.
That's what information I did. On mute, make sure everybody can hear us.
Okay, I'd like to start the Village of Williamsville zoning board of appeals meeting. Call it to order. I'll ask that you please stand for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Justice.
And I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Andrews?
Present.
Ms. Fullwiler? Mr. Freeze?
Yeah.
Mr. Celeste?
Yeah.
Mr. Tyne? Mr. Boyle? Trustee E2?
I'm here.
Okay, village attorney Greco?
Present via Zoom.
And code enforcement officer Masters?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion to accept the minutes from our last meeting. Anyone? Motion to accept. It's just the last second goodbye. Um, I do have one small change on a question. Page three. Uh, number six. Says on the motion, page three, it says on a motion by Mr. Freeze, Mr. Freeze wasn't here, so it was Mr. Tyne. So that, that's the only change. Yeah, paragraph six, it's on, on the motion. Did you get that?
Yes, thank you.
That's the only change. Um, all in favor?
I opposed.
Here. Okay, tonight we have three public hearings. The first is 51 Evans, which was put on hold from last month at the request of the applicant. Uh, we will start with that. I'm going to read the items that are in the file. It's a ZBA application dated May 29th, 2020. Permit trial letter from the code enforcement officer. Legal notice published in the Amherst on July 1st, 2020. A list of, in letters to notify neighbors, a letter to the applicant announcing the hearing, and an agenda. Uh, is the applicant present?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Just a second. We have a formal formality where we have to read the public hearing notice, but you can waive that. Is that acceptable?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Okay, before you begin your presentation, we just want to let you know that we will allow anyone that would like to speak in favor or against your petition to do so after your presentation. We're being recorded, obviously, and, and, um. You're on Zoom, so we don't have to worry about speaking into the microphone. Uh, you need to address the five points. You're familiar with those five points, Rick?
I am.
They need to address those to the board. After you've addressed them, that's when we'll ask if there's anyone in favor and opposition. Um, after that, we'll have the board members asking questions if they'd like.
Sure.
Um, please begin your presentation. Please, uh, name your, uh, name and address, um, and then give your presentation.
Sure. My name is Remy St. George. The address is 51 Evans. And, um. We have requested a very, a height variance, uh, because we need to replace our garage. We're asking to be able to build so that we have usable space above the garage. Not for living space, but just usable space that our family can use. I do not believe that there will be an undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood. Um, I've actually submitted some pictures to Tim Masters. I can also pull them up on the computer, but, um, it would be a carriage house style, so it would go with the feel of the, the village and, and the neighborhood. Our only other real option to get that amount of usable space is just to build a larger one-story structure, so we felt like this would much, have a much less impact if we were able to go a little bit taller. Um, I will be honest, I'm not sure when we're asking about a substantial variance, what your definition of substantial is. We were asking, I think the height is 14 and we're asking for 20. Not sure if that constitutes substantial. Again, I don't think that there will be any negative impact on the environment or the neighborhood. We've spoken with neighbors and they were all amenable to that, especially the neighbor right on the driveway side. And, um, the gra, original garage was built in probably 1910 to 1920, and it really just needs to replaced. It's not stable. It's sinking, uh, because it's a little bit lower than where the neighbor's garage driveway is. And I think that's what we needed addressed. Is there anything else?
Um, do you let your difficulty or hardships self-create?
No, I mean, the, you know, we, I bought the house with the garage and it's, it's just continued to deteriorate because the foundation is cracking because it's lower. So it needs to be replaced.
Um, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, no.
So you have submitted new drawings and specifics and, uh, things that we requested from the last two pre, previous hearing ago. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, this time I'm going to ask if there's anyone on Zoom, um, anything that would, uh, like to speak in favor or opposition to this variance. Seeing none, um, at this point, I'll ask the board members if they have any questions. Mr. Freeze, you want to begin?
Yeah, just briefly, Kevin, this is the mean height is 20 feet, correct? My overall height is 24 and a half.
Correct.
Yeah. So in essence, we're 10 feet higher than.
At the P, you're higher. Where the coach has been. We've gone in the past, we. That could be again, four foot. If you grant it, it's a four-foot area.
So 14 would be higher, a 14 foot would be higher.
14, yeah, correct. 14 feet is allowed, I mean, that's me.
Six.
I'm sorry, yes, 14 to 20. Which is six foot.
Which is 43%.
For.
In terms of significance.
Did you hear that? Did you hear?
Yeah, it's a little tough to hear. I'm turning up my volume more. Okay.
It, the six feet is a variance where the code is 14, represents a 43% request from the code.
Yeah.
It is ans, in answer to your question of what constitutes significant, so it's.
And yes, it is significant.
Thank you. Anything else?
You've mentioned, and I apologize, I can't put my finger on it now, but you mentioned somewhere in your, uh, in your application that you were going to use this for teaching musical lessons to the public.
It's not real, it would be remote mostly. I mean, there may be an occasional, I'm also a school teacher. I do a lot of remote teaching, so with three adults in the family who do teaching, we're not going to have a steady stream of people coming to the house for lessons, but it gives us a, a, a quiet insulated space so that when we are doing remote teaching, we're not getting reverberations because other people in the family are teaching at the same time.
Okay, so the optimum word here is remote. Uh, you're not going to have people coming in and out on a frequent basis?
No, there might be in a ca, one or two a week, but nothing, no stream, no parking issues, no, um. You know, it's, it's, it's much more remote right now, especially with COVID.
Are you planning, planning on, uh, including plumbing or anything like that in this building?
No, just electricity, heat.
I have no more questions. Mr. Tyne, you have any questions for the applicant?
Um, no, no real, real questions. A, a couple of comments. I would say, one, I want to compliment you on the quality of the rendering this time. It's much better than your last.
I got to Mill Middle as opposed to Forest.
And I appreciate it.
I could take a hint.
I, I, um, I think it might, the structure itself might benefit, you know, if you compare, compare it to the other examples you provided in your papers. Um, some horizontal element that helps define the roof of the garage first floor, if you will. That, that where you've got these, these small bands around the, what effectively become columns on either side of the door are really low, and so it looks like it, it accentuates the height of. And if you had something to change that above the garage level of the door, that would help soften the height visually.
Absolutely, and I think one of the pictures that I included um, to Tim does have one of those type features, but we, we will obviously have an architect draw up renderings, and that's certainly, you know, a major concern of ours to make it look attractive and to fit in and have that village quality. We're not looking for a modern fancy-looking. Um, and we want it to fit in, so certainly we can take any of that into account.
Those are the only comments I have. Thank you.
So, Rick, Rick, sorry, th- this is Chip. I just want to chime in on, on this issue of using that space for instruction. Um. What, what's the zoning here?
We're mixed.
R3.
R3. So, I, I mean, under our, under the village's zoning code, home occupation specifically talks about students receiving instruction in visual or performing arts, including but not limited to music, dance, fine arts, or crafts. Um, but it also says, and I'm not frankly sure why this is, but, but a home occupation is not allowed in, in an accessory structure. Um, it's only allowed in the principal structure.
Okay, well, we can certainly work on that. We still need that space.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, I, right, yep, and that's fine. I just wanted to make that clear, but that there would be a code issue. You would, you would need to seek a use variance to allow that space to be used for, for that.
Okay, and certainly that's nothing we're looking at right now anyway, so we can deal with that at a later point if that becomes an issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Celeste, any questions today?
Uh, no, I don't. Everything seems to be in order here.
This for a while. Okay, um. My only question is to the attorney, Chip. Um, I have a question regarding the uh, conditions, if we grant this variance. Um, I can't recall the ones that, I know we've done just a couple, we've done a few of these actually. But, um, I mean, conditions like no plumbing, um, no occupancy as far as, I know the last couple that we've had have been definitely storage, used for storage, that's what they, they came in as um, storage facilities. We were using for storage, second floor, but if, are we, would we be allowed to do something like that?
Yeah, you, you can impose reasonable, um, conditions that are reasonably related to any externalities, uh, caused by the variance, so to, to mitigate the, what you might perceive as the negative impacts associated with granting the variance, so, um. So as long as they're reasonably related to, uh, any issues that you think, you know, are, are, would arise from granting the variance, those are certainly permissible. We have the authority to impose those sorts of conditions.
And a question for Tim. Is an archery zoning allowed to?
Archery is to.
They would allow apartment?
They would allow. They'd have to go through other steps, but.
But they would be allowed.
Yes, archery is a one and two.
Okay, that's all I have. Does the applicant have anything else you'd like to bring before the board?
No.
Okay, is anyone on the board have anything they'd like to bring before the applicant? If not, we will close this public hearing. Uh, we will have a decision this evening. You're certainly welcome to stay on.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
You want to handle this now or you want to? All right, um, entertaining motion to approve. Deny, well, approve and then you don't want it, oh, no.
I'd make a motion that we approve the variance as submitted with the six-foot height requirement or request. Uh, I would like to put a provision on there that there would be no permanent occupancy allowed in the upper area of the garage. That's about it.
Okay. I guess I, uh, on a question on that motion, Tim, what would happen if they came, she came before us and wanted to put an apartment above the garage and still went through the same.
Is this not a detached structure?
Yes.
This is a detached, that's really, how can you?
You can in the, in that zoning, but you, the way the codes were denied, you need a special. So they would have to come in for you guys for approval for that too.
So then let me rephrase that, that no permanent occupancy allowed in the upper, uh, upper, uh, floor of the garage without applying for a special use permit. I think that's already.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I think, I mean, I think it's okay to put that in there, but I'm not, I don't think it's necessary because that's all, would already be required.
Okay, so along the same lines of the plumbing, then. It didn't allow it to put plumbing in, they, they can come back and get a special use permit, but plumbing, is that correct?
If they want to use it.
Go ahead and use it as a apartment.
Secondary residence.
Right, right.
Well, if they also want to have classes up there, they have to come back, because then it changes, wasn't that what?
Change the use.
It's a change of use.
Well, that would be a, it would be a home occupation. The home occupation for teaching is to saying would require a, another variance, so no matter what, they need another variance to do to its teaching, living, or anything up there, other than storage.
So in essence, this meeting is specifically for the height.
Correct. So you're kind of protected on the other side.
Just, just, Tim, just to make sure we're clear though, so uh, it's an accessory apartment wouldn't require a variance that would require a special use permit.
Right.
A home occupation use in that space would require a variance.
For use variance.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right.
So I'll modify, I'll modify my, uh, motion, uh, by stating that, uh, I, I, uh, make a motion to approve the variance as submitted with this six-foot height difference.
Motion by Mr. Freeze, I have a second. Second amendment for a while. On the question, would the clerk please take the roll? Do you have that, the res, or motion?
It was Mr. Freeze and it was seconded by Ms. Fullwiler.
That's correct.
Yes, my, I.
Next one, please.
Okay. Ms. Fullwiler?
Oh, I'm sorry, could you read the motion back to us, just so we know we're on the same page? Are you recording this?
On motion by Mr. Freeze, seconded by Ms. Fullwiler. Um, it is motion to approve the variance as submitted with the condition that no permanent occupancy be allowed in the upper floor of the garage.
No, you can strike that last section.
Right, I modified it to read, uh, I make, I make a motion to approve the variance, uh, as submitted.
Period.
Period, correct.
Okay, and that's the final motion.
That's correct. The second amendment for a while. That's correct, the second amendment for.
All right, and we'll do the roll call. Miss Fullwiler? I'm sorry. Mr. Freeze? Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Celeste?
Yes.
Mr. Tyne? Okay, five to zero, approved.
Um, motion passes five to zero, your variance is approved, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Second hearing, uh, schedule is ninety-three Gordon Street. Before we begin, um, I would like to again to ask the attorney. The minutes from the last meeting that we had that granted the variance for the house that for a house to be built on that property. Since the uh motion by Mr. Tyne, second by Mr. Freeze, who's agreed to amend the original motion to approve both area variances. Which establish minimum area for buildable lots in the R three zone and from section one twelve. Fourteen C, which establishes a minimum street five hundred fifty foot minimum. As submitted with the following condition, that the applicant, Mr. Santora, submits substantially the same building plans. Design and size of the house as was submitted and reviewed tonight. My question to you is, and I guess the question goes to Tim first, Tim, what is the difference between this house and the house?
It's not the same house.
Square footage wise, what's the difference?
It's small.
Smaller, okay, secondly, doesn't need any variances other than?
It would need the same variance as last time, just on the buildable lots.
But no variances for the to build the house?
They can achieve all the peppers at that.
Okay, so my question is to the attorney, it sounds to me like this is substantially the same building plan.
Me too.
Doesn't the variance go?
Exactly.
So this is a smaller part of the structure. And and nothing is changing with the property, well setbacks are greater rather than less.
Yeah, I did, I didn't take it that way.
That's my question to the attorney.
My, yeah, so I, just because of the 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 unusual nature of that, the approval before. I agree with, I mean, that 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 because there was a condition that basically the application had to be. Exactly what was proposed and now it's not, I.
Substantially the same door.
Well, right, but but it's a new application, so I, what I would say is. You could probably dispose of this pretty easily then, um, because i- if if. In fact, we already granted a similar, but even more requiring greater. Relief from the code than what's being proposed now, um.
Well, I think, I mean, I'm sure he was going to make the motion.
Exactly, and the point of the motion at the time is not the size of the house. It was the style of the house, we asked him to come in and build a house that looks substantially like this. And we're getting, which is, if you notice, the softened appearance of a garage to the rear, the the a very. Village style architectural home that we liked, and it was approved. Based on the representation that this is what the gentleman was going to build. And we would give him a variance because he was going to come in with a home that looked like this. He came in with a house that looks like this.
Well, just just want to clarify, so it's not him coming in, he, they actually found another house. Whatever the story is, they don't, they're selling the property, this is a new applicant.
Yeah.
With a new owner, so it's not the same person.
I understand, I understand, so I'm saying, this person is coming in in reliance of the variance that we granted for Mr. Santora. And wants to build a house that looks nothing like what Mr. Santora said he would build for us. When we granted him the variance, conditioned that he would build a house that looked like this, and now we're getting a house that's dominated by our front garage door, it looks very suburban. It could go anywhere in Chico lava, it's not what we were looking for at the time, that's why they're here. Because it's smaller and the variances are are lessened because the side yards are now bigger. Therefore, he can have them, it's the fact that he's building something that bears no resemblance to what we originally said, save for the fact. That it's a house.
And that's all, that's all fine, and that's, but that's why I think this is a new application, and so you guys can.
I would make it.
Vote accordingly.
All right, that's what I want, that's the clarification, that's why I brought this up to begin with, before we started the hearing, because I wanted to make that clear that. Whether it's considered substantially the same building or not, and.
And and by the way, I haven't, I haven't looked at, I I haven't looked at any of the rendering, so that wasn't really. My analysis was simply. The 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 previous approval was quite specific. My understanding is that that this new application does not. Fall within the four corners of that approval, so this is a new application.
What bothers me is that the last owner represented himself is building the house for himself. On that property and and I voted no, but the rest of the board voted for it and they voted for the house that. Mr. Tyne has shown.
And he was going to build it, I believe, for sale, I think.
Right.
He wasn't going to build it for himself, he was going to build it as a real estate investment and sell it, but he was going to build something that we thought would benefit. And add value to the rest of the village and the surrounding neighborhood, and now we're getting something that in my opinion, doesn't accomplish the same thing.
And he turns around and sells this property to this new owner. And I hope there's a, there's a contingency on it, but I bet these people. Come in and propose the new building to us, whatever that building is. Um, so we're back to square one almost.
That that's the way I, that's the way I view it, look, I, that that the previous variance. Essentially, he never satisfied the conditions, so. That's, it, he abandoned that that variance in in my opinion, so this is a new application, so you guys can. Discuss and decide after there's a hearing and everybody has the right to be heard on this. As to whether or not you s- believe that, given the style of. That's being proposed now, whether you're still inclined to allow a substandard lot.
Okay, very good, all right, so at this point, we will open the public hearing. Um, I will read what's in the file, there's a Z B A application dated September fifteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, just to reiterate what the attorney was saying, for anyone that's on for this particular hearing. Uh, this is considered a brand new hearing, the last variance that was granted now is null and void. Um, so this is now a new hearing, a new variance request, uh, we start from scratch like we did last time. Uh, so the other items in the file are the permit denial letter from the code enforcement officer. A legal notice published to the Amers B on October seventh, twenty twenty. A list of and letter to notify neighbors, a letter to the applicant announcing the hearing, and an agenda. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Good. Not coming up on the. Yeah, you're not coming up on the uh on the screen. Not sure.
Can you hear me, it's under Merrick Marcelo, it says, has the name.
Okay, very good, um, so, uh, please address the five criteria, do you have a list of the five criteria?
Uh, yeah, I have it here, um, so.
I'm just wanting to make sure that you know, you're aware of it. Um, we will ask you, you give the presentation, we're going to ask if there's anyone in the audience in favor or against, they'll be able to speak. After they're they're done speaking, you can rebut anything that comes up if you'd like. Um, we also will have the members of the board ask you any questions after that. Uh, please make your, state your name and address in your presentation.
Uh, Dominic Marcelo, this is about ninety-three Gordon Street. As far as the undesirable change to the neighborhood, um. I think this would only raise the value of nearby homes with a brand new house being built there. Um, to address the garage being in the front of the house, as uh I heard mentioned earlier. Um, there's other houses in the neighborhood and next door that have a garage in the front of the um house as well. So I think it would fit in actually with the houses on the street. Um, and it's smaller than the previously approved uh plan, so I don't think there's any. Undesirable change that uh would happen from having a smaller house there than what was previously approved. The benefit, um, cannot build on the lot without having this variance, so I don't think there's any other way. Way to achieve this. Uh, the substantialness of the variance, um, it's common for a house to be built on that size of lot, I think there's other lots on that street. With the same size um lot there, so. I don't think that would be considered substantial. Um, any adverse impacts to the environment, um, the lot is already cleared, there's no trees or anything that would have to be removed. The soil test that uh was done came back as being good, so I don't think there's any issue there. And the alleged difficulty. I think since it was already approved as a buildable lot, um, we were under the impression that. We'd be able to build on this, so I don't think uh that was something that was self-created there.
So I noticed under your alleged difficulty hardship, so created, you put. Our contract stated the property is currently zoned for residential use as a one family dwelling, is that a contingency on the sale?
Uh, yeah, we are contingent on being approved, um. And we have that in our contract.
Is contingent on the fact that you get this variance?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, anything else you'd like to add?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Else that you'd like to add for your presentation?
Um, that's all I have right now.
So the house that's shown is the house that you proposed, is that correct? You know, the house that you, we we have in our files here is one that you proposed.
Yeah, we we submitted the uh billing plans, I, I'm not sure if that's what's in front of you, but you, yes.
Okay. Okay, is there anything else that you'd like to add, you or your wife?
No.
I don't think so.
All right, at this time, I'm going to ask if there's anyone in favor of this variance. And you're on Zoom, please come on. Okay, at this time, I'll ask if there's anyone opposed. If you can uh raise your hand or bring your mic in. Anyone like to speak against this?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, this is Doug, I live next door at eighty-seven Gordon, I haven't seen what this new proposal looks like. Because what you had approved before with Santora, who lied to you. About what he was going to do, and he did say he was going to live there. I'd like to see what Merritt and Dominic have proposed as what's different from what Santora proposed.
Okay, Tim's trying to put it on the screen, if you watch the screen, you should see it, Charlie.
Thank you.
Um, and this is Dominic, I would like to add that we do fully intend on living in the house and uh moving in as soon as it's done.
Don't see anything.
Is it a one story house?
Two story.
Two story.
Um, based on the design, though, it does appear one story from the uh street. And it's got a dormer on the front for one of the rooms.
Can you see that now, I can't turn it, so you gotta turn your head.
This is the rear of the home.
Okay.
And then that's.
Front, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay.
That two story section there, and how close is that going to be to the street? The front where the garage is, which is on our side?
It would be setback the same distance as uh your house.
Two story building that'll be on the the right of, the left of me, and I've got the duplex on the right of me. So this thing with the with the second floor like that takes away everything that we've got, and then depending on how close it is. To it, I've got nothing on the 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 right side, the left side of my house as far as looking at, I've got a two story structure on both sides. That garage was supposed to be in the back, I believe, according to the original plan.
We're going to bring up the survey, I thought it was on the same page. There's the survey there, if you can see it, that the house is going to be exactly, the setback is exactly the same as your house and the house next door.
Yeah, and I'm going to have a two story building right next to my front, right here on the side. From where my kitchen and dining room are, and I'll be looking at a two story structure. Whereas before, the garage was set back further and the house was a little bit further away.
Correct.
Yeah, correct, so Santora lies and gets away with it.
Is there anything else in the other comments you'd like to make?
What's the very, what's what's going to be, it's what I'm concerned about is when the plumbing goes in or the pipeline. Out to the sewer, I don't want any water or damage to my, in my basement.
Right, again, a soil test had been accomplished, I saw the boring report from the architect, everything seems.
Who's that? Ten Masters?
Yes, this is Ten Masters.
Yeah, that only went down, that 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 survey for the soil survey went down, how many feet, seven?
But the typical basement's only seven or eight feet anyways, so that was sufficient for what we typically need, but. Again, there's there's no evidence of any water table or anything, but you know, it'll see you day, but if I'm not mistaken, there's a.
There's a storm sewer. I believe it comes between your house and the other side, is that correct? It goes all the way over to Erin? Does that sound right?
Who are you speaking to?
You got a manhole out front, where your manhole is on your, in your driveway. There's a, I I'm looking at an old map here, and then I had to go to speak up. Cause I was trying to figure out where they were tying that storm sewer on Gordon too, but it turns out it's an old storm sewer that comes through the yards. I believe it comes to your back, your side yard, and it goes across to the Alessi's house, which is on the other side. And they have a manhole in their front, in their concrete, so I think that's the only, I I, the only thing I know about anything about water and that's. Or, you know, in your, on that property, it's not even on your, their property, it's on the other property. It's, it looks like it runs between your house and the house, the double, the duplex next door. I mean, I, you know that better than I would, if you look at your survey, so. But as far as the water goes, as far as things are happening, it's it's, you're going to be a civil case, obviously, between yourself and. And the neighbor, if that would happen, which, you know, shouldn't happen if the building inspector is doing his job and. Is there anything else you'd like to bring up?
No.
Okay, thank you, is there anyone else who would like to speak against this variance, or have any question about this variance? Is that Mr. Alessi up there? Like, your mic is muted, I believe.
There, we're unmuted now?
Yeah, there you go, can you just state your your name and your address, please?
Uh, Sam Alessi, ninety-nine Gordon Street, we're on the other side of the lot.
Okay, go ahead.
Sure, I mean, is.
I I understand what Doug's concern is, I, we have more space between our. Our house and the lot, and I I don't, again, we hadn't seen the plans until just now. I don't know, would there be any possible way to flip? The high part of of the house to our side? I, again, I have no idea if that's an easy thing or a difficult thing, or what it would do.
It is possible, you would have to be able to be architect and the the applicant to decide if they would like to do that, but it is possible.
I mean, that would mean that that Doug wouldn't be.
Sandwiched in.
Sandwiched in between two stories so close to this house on both sides.
Anything, yes, and does the applicant have, I'll, I'm going to ask the applicant if they they heard the, heard what went on there and then have any comment on it?
Um, yes, we did hear that. Um, it is possible, I do have the architect here with us as well, um.
Yeah, I mean, we could definitely, I know that they haven't really seen the plans. Um, and I don't know if you would even be able to see it if I hold it up, but what happens is it slopes from one story. So it doesn't get to two stories until you're back. At least, you know, fifteen feet from your, the front of your house. So we did try to lessen it honestly by doing the dormer and not bringing a full two story home right out to the street. Um, I mean, here's.
I think we can't see that.
Okay.
So if you didn't hear what they were saying, the Alessis were saying that. So if you didn't hear what they were saying, the Alessis were saying that. If you flip-flop the building, put the garage on the other side, the two-story, the front that comes out, two-story with the door between the office right above it.
Right.
On their side and not on the side of the other people, and so when they looked out there, they wouldn't be within that ten-foot distance, which it looks like, but.
Okay, and I honestly, I think that's something that. That could be done. I would I could mirror image it and. If that would help, you know, I'm gonna be happy. Yeah, yeah.
And and the applicants understand that or that?
I think.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Alessi, did you have anything else that you'd like to?
Uh, no, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else would like to speak in opposition or any comment at all? Okay. At this point, I'm gonna ask if um. Any of the board members would like to ask some questions regarding this, and I'll start again with Mr. Freeze.
At this time, I have no question.
All right, we'll go to Mr. Time.
I have no question.
All right, Mr. Celeste?
I understand, nothing at this time.
Uh, Ms. Fullwiler?
If I see it, understood correctly, you you guys were did look at the plans that were previously approved and decided that you did not want that house?
Perhaps it's too large for us.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, is there anything else that the applicant would like to address the board before we close the hearing?
Um, no, I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're gonna close the public hearing this time. We will make a decision, and you are welcome to stick around and listen, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could we possibly, and I didn't get the other gentleman's. But can we possibly ask him if that would satisfy his issues if they reverse the. Sure. Building mirror image of this. Uh, before we close the public hearing, I'll ask the the gentleman to the south, the south side, could you please come on?
Talking to me?
Yes. Doug Duro. Did you hear Mr. Freeze's comment?
Are are you satisfied with the mirror image as Mr. Alessi had proposed and and the applicant has agreed to? Uh, that the two-story is facing the Alessis rather than you? Are you satisfied with that?
I, yeah, I'd say yes, I can agree to that with the Merritt and Dominic. I have no call, no, nothing with them. I met them before.
I wanna inter. I don't wanna interrupt you, but we have to, we have to get out of the mindset that the previous owner. Uh, did us an injustice. It's done, that's over. These young, young kids wanna wanna build a nice house in a beautiful village. And uh, this is what we're talking about today, and I just wanted to make sure that you two folks are satisfied. With the concession that they're making by reversing the 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 image of their home.
Yeah, I think it's good.
As long as that's what occurs, then sure, then I will agree with that.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, we will close the public hearing. And I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the, or excuse me, approve the variance as as requested.
Okay, do you wanna put a condition on that, Mr. Freeze?
Yes, I do. That that the uh, the structure is the exact. Uh, reverse image as to what we see here currently, and that the architect, of course. Finalizes new plans for the building department showing that change.
Okay.
Instead of garage right.
Do I have a second on it?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Celeste. Motion by Mr. Freeze, second by Mr. Celeste. I'm the question.
I completely understand what the neighbors have thought. I I will say I can see multiple sides to this issue. I don't think it's it's just black and white. Um, but if you look at what was originally proposed, um, there, the neighbors to the right are a hundred percent correct. Because it was a garage setback immediately next to them. They did not have a house that took up the full width of the lot. They had a house that was pushed to one side with the driveway next to them, so they didn't have the full two stories really close to that. This house is mirrored or not, will still have a dormer second story, and it will still be fairly close to the property line. It is, um, bears very little resemblance to what we were going to get. I understand Mr. Santoro isn't here anymore. I I also. Appreciate the fact that. If this lot were wider and they didn't need a variance for width, that the neighbors could have a house in this exact location. With very little change that puts it this close to the property line and it wouldn't be an issue. It's solely the fact that this lot's so narrow that that puts them here, but I thought we had negotiated really something very good for everyone. And I think the neighbor may be correct that Mr. Santora ultimately decided to live there. I believe initially he was talking about selling it. As an investment, and maybe at the end of it, he decided he was, he liked this house and was going to move there, but the fact remains he's not. And that petition isn't before us anymore, but I for one. Really, I'm gonna be disheartened that we aren't go, if we, if this is approved, we're not going to get. What we had negotiated, which I think was very good for the village and for the neighborhood.
Okay, it's time to question. Any else on the question?
I I must second that because I I think that the condition, when we granted the variance. The house itself was was what we granted. It was a condition conditioned on a house that fit into the village that looks like a village house. To me, this this doesn't look like. I have one of these on my street and it just, I don't. It just sticks out. It's it's it doesn't look like anything else down the street. Not that I want all the houses to look alike, but we have a village. We have village setting. And to approve a a a variance on a lot that's. We don't have to grant because the size of it, we should at least be able to choose that the house fits into the village. And I would like to see something that looks like a house in the village, and I know they don't want the other house because it's too big, but they got an architect here. And the architect changed it a little bit, so it's a smaller house, so that it looks better on the lot and fits into the to the area. So that's why I I agree with that complaint.
Great. Anything else?
The only I would say is last time the, a bunch of the neighbors did complain that that house is too tall. You're not getting messing with this.
What is the, what is the difference, Mike?
Not sure. It said. Obviously, this is more like a deep cut, and that was a full-two-story, it was a roof, so you're bigger, that's.
But it was the width of the driveway, right?
Yeah, that's everything.
Okay, I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll motion.
Mr. Time?
Well.
Mr. Celeste?
Yes.
Mr. Freeze?
Yes.
Ms. Fullwiler? Ms. Fullwiler?
Oh, sorry.
Did you repeat that?
I said, no.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews?
I'm voting, um. Mainly because Mr. Santoro came to us and uh. And it's not relevant to the, to the, to this particular variance, this particular variance, but. Uh, if you remember correctly, you know, we had one of the neighbors that had come to us and said that Mr. Santoro represented to them, he was going to get a total lot, whether. They liked it or not, and I didn't like that attitude, but. Um, this is a different variance, different people before us. But I I agree with Mr. Time with what he said, and and Mr. Freeze at the time also. Um, and and the rest of the board also voted for that particular style of home. Uh, with that separation there, which gave the neighbor, you know, a driveway width anyway, twelve foot, ten, six foot, or ten foot, whatever it was, but it was wider than it is now. So at this particular case, I I'm gonna vote no and recommend to the applicant that they get their architect together, look at the the old. Rendering and see if they can come up with something similar uh, in a smaller scale. So the variance has been defeated three to two. And we'll move on to next, uh, next to the question.
So with that being said, the grass variance still stands.
Okay.
And in the discussion before, what are we gonna constitute as similar enough? Like, do you want them to come back regardless, or are we gonna use that?
I would recommend they come back with.
Okay, that's what I wanna do. They wanna, you wanna come back with the. I agree with that. So are we, I agree.
Yes, so are we.
Well, I I think if they came back with the exact house that you guys approved before.
They wouldn't need.
Has already been granted.
Right, but they said that's too large for them, so I'm sure they were, they're going to downside somehow.
I just remember in the beginning we discussed, but it may have been thought that. Substantially different wasn't necessarily the same house.
Right.
So if they wanna shrink it a little bit, are are you gonna be comfortable with me going ahead with that, or do you wanna see it first? That's that's what I wanna.
Is the board, I think we wanna see it.
I don't, I think, you know, I for one, trust your judgment. You are capable of looking at a house and determining if it looks architecturally substantially like this. Or it looks like that. I don't think it's that difficult to decide, and I would trust you to make that judgment. This doesn't have to come back to us. If it follows this. I'm not worried so much about the dimensional. Right. That's what I wanna. That it's precise to this.
Right.
But I do want it to look something like this. Does everyone feel?
Yes.
So we'll.
Did you hear that, Chip?
Yeah, yes, yep, I heard that, and I'm I'm comfortable with that for sure.
I will have a conversation with the applicant, and we'll see where we wanna go.
Okay.
And then proceed, either way.
Very good. Okay, as the applicant, I I know you're still on, did you hear what 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 just took place?
Uh, yes, we did.
Okay, so they, so the uh, the building inspector will contact you and we have a discussion.
All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you for.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the next public hearing. This particular one is. Thirty-one Castle Creek Trail. Uh, read the items that are in the file. There's a ZBA application dated September twenty-nine, twenty-twenty. Determination letter from the code enforcement officer, legal notice published in the AMR3 on October seventh, twenty-twenty. A list of, and letter to notify neighbors, letter to the applicant announcing the hearing, and a agenda. Is the applicant here?
Yes, I'm here.
So this is a, this is a decision. Of, I believe that you are requesting that we override a decision made by the. Code enforcement official, is that correct?
Yes, I'm not a lawyer, but uh, what I'm looking for, and I have a presentation whenever you wanna hear it, is looking to. Enforce the resolution that was passed in nineteen eighty-nine.
Okay.
So so. Determining, um. Yeah, so this is an appeal of the code enforcement officer's determination that, in fact, what has been proposed by. The property owner adjacent to. This is consistent with that condition that was imposed by the. Board of trustees, because this was under exceptional development, which no longer exists. Back in nineteen eighty-nine, so. The applicant is appealing that determination that, in fact, what has been proposed. Satisfies that condition.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so if you'd like to state your name and address and begin your presentation, please.
Thank you. Name, Cheryl Meyer, address ninety Willowbrook Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss our beautiful street situation with you. We have been trying for two years to speak with anyone in the village. That being said, we love the beauty of our street. We do not want to see it ruined by development. And that is why we took the time thirty-one years ago to carve out a realistic, yet smart approach that dovetails to the needs of the village with ours. We worked with the village collaboratively so all parties could prosper. Our love of the street couldn't be more evident than having the same four people that worked with the village thirty-one years ago, still on the street. And I would note that three out of four of the families are on this Zoom call right now, the fourth being quite ill. Our goal is to ensure that the promises made by the village are promises kept for the fifth and sixth generations of families on the street. Our goal is to maintain the beauty of Willowbrook Drive, built in nineteen forty-seven, that was promised to us in response to the building of a new street, Castle Creek, in two thousand. When the Castle Creek development was proposed, all lots were required to be fully screened. With no backyards or adjoining property visible to Willowbrook, agreed to and stated in the April twenty-fourth, nineteen eighty-nine minutes and resolution. Included in the packet you received are copies of those minutes, the resolution, before and after pictures, and eight signed requests. From the residents of the neighborhood that asked for the enforcement of the resolution. The minutes stated that dense evergreens and the preservation of existing trees were to be combined to serve as the buffer. These words were chosen chosen carefully and represent the covenant agreed to between the residents of Willowbrook, Castle Creek, and the village board. There was no expiration date noted. In fact, when determining a path to proceed in nineteen eighty-nine, the Willowbrook residents discussed forming an HOA. The board told us there was no need, as these commitments made were made and would be filed, as noted in the resolution. This was filed until the past three years. Now several of the backyards are open fully visible to Willowbrook. This is the very concern we voiced thirty-one years ago, and the minutes and resolution addressed. The fully screened has been replaced by fully opened. The same four Willowbrook family owners that attended that meeting in nineteen eighty-nine still reside on the street. We pass the houses down from generation to generation. We represent over two hundred years of living and paying taxes on this beautiful street. The response given to us from the Williamsville zoning rep is that the trees that have been planted will grow. This is not consistent with the words that were written, dense evergreens with no view of the backyards. This could be a perpetual duel that will occur every time a house is sold, or the Castle Creek residents decide to change their landscaping to open up their view. As stated, this was filed in the beginning of the development, consistent with the resolution for twenty-five plus years. There are only four houses that need to follow the resolution by ensuring that they buy large evergreen trees, which they had done in the past. In fact, it is really only two houses that need to follow the resolution as of today, thirty-one and thirty-nine. And I included before and after pictures in your packets. To continue to allow the Castle Creek owners to do what they want violates the intent of the resolution. As noted in the resolution by Mr. Time, who was then the engineer representing Castle Creek and is now a board member, and I quote. There is already a dense-treed area, and this would not be touched. End quote. This is now house thirty-nine, and you can see from the pictures that the dense tree area was taken down. Finally, the economic loss to the value of Willowbrook is difficult to calculate. But one local successful realtor estimated that the loss to be between thirty to fifty thousand per home. While enhancing the value of the houses on Castle Creek that don't have a front yard to use. Castle Creek houses are generally assessed at forty to seventy percent higher than Willowbrook right now. In closing, I just wanna note a few of the comments that were included in the packets that many of my neighbors that are on this call have. But uh, I can't stress enough how uh. We talked about having fully treed where no backyard is visible to Willowbrook. That's on page of the minutes, page eight. Uh, on page eighteen, Mr. White had committed to putting in deed restrictions, and he was going to take care of that. So that we could maintain the beauty of the area. On page eighteen of the minutes, rear yards facing neighboring yards will be fully screened with a living hedge. So in conclusion, I wanna thank you for your time. I wanna tell you that we love our street. And we really wanna maintain the beauty of it, and we hope that you see what we're talking about, because it's very important to many of us. And we really want to maintain the beauty of it, and we hope that you see what we're talking about, because it's very important to many of us. On this call. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, just have a comment. Board members weren't ignoring your, your invitation. Come out and take a look at the property. We, we aren't allowed to meet. Um, if we meet together as a group, we have to have a formal meeting and it has to be advertised and.
I understand. I just wanted to make sure you felt comfortable coming on the street, and a lot of times it's hard to park, so that's why I wanted to tell you where you could park. Just so you could come see.
Didn't ignore your invitation. It was, by law, we really can't come out and meet like that. Um, so at this point, um, I'm going to ask if there's anyone on Zoom meeting that would like to, uh. Speak in favor or against this opposition.
Hi, this is Jeff, Jeff Dorn. The, uh, property owner at thirty-one Castle Creek. And I certainly want to speak in favor of it. Um, we were the first house that built on Castle Creek in, uh, nineteen ninety-nine. And, um, we did put an evergreen screen in behind, at no one's insistence. Because there were trees back there then, which, uh, were primarily ashed and have all died and needed to be removed. And the evergreen screen that we had, the trees were also dying out on the bottoms. So, uh. We have removed those and replaced it with another evergreen screen. And I, I can't help it that Ms. Myers doesn't care for our patio or our ugly house. And, um, you know, we try to do what's consistent with being, uh, good neighbors. And I think that, uh, Mr. Masters has found that we've done that.
So you're, you're actually against the variance, and you don't want us to override the building inspector's decision, is that correct?
Thank you.
Yeah, just, Rick, just again, that, you're speaking. Against the appeal in support of the code enforcement officer's interpretation, and this is not a variance, this is a. Appeal of Tim's determination.
Okay. So, uh, so when I'm looking at this photo, uh, it says after thirty-one, whose house am I looking from to, to where? Is that thirty-one that I'm looking at? That's from twenty Willowbrook.
Yes, that's correct. Those pictures are before and after pictures, that's correct.
You, you cited the homeowners or something because they had torn down all this. Of the shrubs and whatever the trees that were.
From my side, I guess on my presentation, um. I, I received a call from Michelle saying that she was not happy with the screening that was being installed at thirty-one Castle Creek. And looking at it and looking into it and going through the minutes, I disputed her claim that the screening that was going to be installed was not sufficient. She's making the claim, she stated tonight, that the screening does not meet the approvals that were granted under exceptional development. I looked at the plan that was going to be installed by the resident at thirty-one Castle Creek. And found that to be in keeping with the approval. That was my determination. So they were not sent a citation. I did stop there and had a meeting with them, found it to be, in my opinion, sufficient with the approval. And she asked me for a response, so I gave her a formal determination to trigger this meeting. Uh, that's, that's ultimately what got us.
And thirty-nine is planted and now replanted, the evergreens?
No, thirty-nine.
Thirty-one.
Has planted and replanted the evergreens, but thirty-nine is not planted yet. They just have the fence.
That's correct. The backyards are both visible. And all we're trying to do is to maintain the integrity of the street according to the minutes. And what we agreed to, and I think Mr. Tine was a very active member at that point. He can probably speak to it. I'm sure he remembers the passion that. The street had back in nineteen eighty-nine.
So the picture in your right hand, that one, is before the subdivision was constructed. Which I also dispute because that's going to be a very skewed picture. There's no house there.
Right.
That is the picture currently when you stand by the fence, but not from the street on Willowbrook. So.
Could you say that again, Tim? I couldn't hear you.
A photo of the fence is taken close to the property line, not from right in your backyard, correct? You, you walked to the edge of.
No, I took it from my backyard. I'm sorry, what?
Edge of your property line, correct?
No, I, no, I took it from where my grass is on my property.
Yeah, towards the back. And the other picture in your right hand is, my understanding is that before the houses were built, is that correct?
I, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you. Could you say that again, please?
Before the houses were constructed. Is this picture, is, can you see his photo? I'm holding up, that's the one showing the wooden lot. It's called, it's showing a wooden lot, can you see that?
I'm sorry, I can't. I didn't. No, they're after the houses are built. And the picture before was the, the densely treed lot that in the minutes, Mr. Tine said would not change. That would remain the same. Correct.
So is this, so is this, uh, thirty-nine, this photo of thirty-nine, so it's Castle Creek, is that? Is that, has that been like that?
It was fully treed and every tree was taken down, and then they put up that wrought iron fence that we really don't see a lot in Williamsville.
This is, this was done a long time, a long time ago. Wasn't done yesterday or last week.
That was done three years ago.
No, it wasn't.
No, no, sir, this is thirty-nine, this isn't your, your.
No, I know, but thirty-nine has, has been there for.
They took down all the trees three years ago and put the fence up because we noticed then the deer getting stuck. Near the fence, and now they're on my property, which is fine, but that's how I know.
But you didn't bring this before the, before the village way, the building inspector or any, any other.
Yes, I did. I brought it in front of Brian when he was still mayor, and then it switched over to the new mayor. Who told me, as I mentioned in the write-up, that, um, she didn't want to handle the issue. Because the minutes are old.
So the vegetation along the property, the existing vegetation, that was there prior to any homes being built. Was removed three years ago, and according to the testimony, that's according to testimony of Ms. Myers, yes. But according to the testimony of the gentleman who lives at thirty-one, um, it was taken down. And I don't know by who, but it was taken down, uh.
We're doing two separate lots, though, and I'm not sure. I think we might be getting confused. Thirty-nine is the lot with the fence, and that was what Mr. Tine referred to in the minutes. As the densely treed area that would remain the same.
If I may, so when the landscaping was taken out, according to the gentleman who lives at thirty-one, not thirty-nine. There's no one here that I've heard from thirty-nine yet, is there?
Well, that's why, uh, Tim and I talked about this, and I really wanted to make this about the minutes. Where, I'm sorry, what?
So the gentleman who spoke from thirty-one said that the vegetation was removed because. Predominantly it had died off. It was mostly ash and it was dead. So it died, no one killed it, no one just cut it down. Because they didn't want it there. It was removed because it was dead and removed, and in response to that, he planted a bunch of evergreens. So.
That is not true. There was a forty-foot tree. That Mr. Dorn came to me and asked if he could come on my property to take down for fear that that tree could fall on his house. When they took the tree down, the tree company told me it was a very healthy tree. I did my neighbor a favor by allowing him to come on my property and take a tree down, and he never.
There we go.
All right, so.
All right, Ms. Myers, just listen to, um, Mr. Tine for a second. We'll put you back. Can we just unmute you for a second?
So, the neighbor at thirty-one said those trees were removed because they were dead. Okay, sorry. Anybody else?
No, the, the trees that he was referring to were on his property between him.
I understand that.
Yes, but there, in my understanding, there was no tree removed on thirty-nine.
I didn't say that. I said thirty-one. I've never said thirty-nine.
Right, but he wasn't referring to thirty-nine. That's what I wanted to say.
I'm talking about thirty-one. We'll get to thirty-nine in a minute.
Okay.
And by the way, if you look at the Google Earth images from before these trees were moved. Or even from way back when, if you go back on the timeline, those trees were there the length of the property. It was a pretty heavily vegetated property line, going back forever. Thirty-nine, thirty-one, any other property, they were all vegetated. In the rear, and my testimony backed in this record, which I was not on the board. I was representing Mr. Whitehead, who was the developer. I didn't represent any of the property owners, had nothing to do with any of that. This was the proposal to build a subdivision, which, according to someone tonight, took ten years for the first house to be built. From the time it was approved. So now we're looking at these trees that were removed because they were dead. Three years ago, I'll just accept that. I have no idea when it was. They came down. But there was a requirement in the minutes when you look through what was represented at the approval, was that that vegetation would be preserved. No representation that it might die on its own, but that there would still be some connecting and possibly some fencing, but the fencing wouldn't be transparent. Like a wrought iron fence with just bars that have a high degree of transparency. So this gentleman at thirty-one planted evergreen trees. He said tonight that those first group died or were starting to die, and he replanted trees. So he's fulfilled that element of the approval, because he didn't guarantee that the existing vegetation wouldn't die of its own accord. So he planted those trees at thirty-one. At thirty-nine. The photographs show the same vegetation removed, I assume, maybe incorrectly, but it seems reasonable to, uh, assume that. That died there as well, and that vegetation was removed, and they replaced it to the mo- for the moment. With a fence, but if I'm hearing you correctly, that wasn't the end of the story. They had a landscape plan where they were going to plant. Additional trees. Is this what you had said would substantially comply with the requirement, but they have not yet been planted? Thirty-one, the picture shows no trees planted, thirty-one.
Look at my response letter that I supplied to, or I also sent this one. Um, there's a letter in there for myself that shows my before and after.
So this picture.
No, not those, there's.
This picture is not representative of current condition.
That's, I don't know where she picked that picture from, but yes, that represents current conditions at thirty-nine.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Yes.
So is there a plan that shows me what is supposed to be planted along that property line? Across all these houses, where the vegetation has died, what is replacing it so that there's a landscape screen that this, this homeowner is representing? Does not comply with the spirit of what was approved in nineteen eighty-nine? Do we have a plan that I can look at that shows me what either is, has been planted or has yet to be planted that isn't in yet?
No, not from thirty-nine. I have not had a discussion with the resident of thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine isn't even in the discussion.
Thirty-nine. The problem for me was, if that was in fact done three years ago, that was not an issue that was brought up three years ago. The current issue that I have now is between thirty-one and twenty.
Strictly.
Strictly. She's, she's adding thirty-nine in, which I understand. I was not here three years ago. I did not make the determination.
Thirty-nine isn't an issue with the second, right now.
She, she's claiming it isn't an issue, which it may be. I understand your point. But thirty-nine is not the person who was doing the re-landscaping and is not, is not part of this issue. I understand that they think. The top one is during construction, the bottom.
That's thirty-one.
That's looking at thirty-one from the twenty thirty-one floor from the street.
Right here. That's what it was when it came down, and this one looks like now.
Correct. Now thirty-nine, if you look at those photos, is sort of left.
Tim, I, I, I just shared my screen that shows, this is thirty-one. This is thirty-nine.
Ms. Myers, are you there?
Can we remove your screen here for a minute so we can see if everybody can come back? Because we've lost everyone here.
Hi, I'm here.
Myers, okay. Have you been listening to all that?
Yes, I did listen to all of it.
Okay, so what's before us tonight is thirty-one Castle Creek. Um, the issue of thirty-nine is something you're going to have to take up with the building inspector?
I see.
Well, it's a totally separate issue from tonight.
Yeah.
Because that decision, the decision he made was regarding thirty-one, and that's what we're speaking of and we're addressing this evening. Just so you know, okay?
Sure.
This depends on how you want to handle it. This, this, this is my problem with, with the request. If you look at the property lines. There isn't really much rear yard facing twenty Willowbrook, as you can see there.
Yeah.
The, the rear yard is what's specified as needing to be screened. Most of their rear yard is facing the creek, right? So.
This, this is, yeah, to, to that point, so again, I, I assume you all have this in front, but the condition. That was imposed by the village board in nineteen eighty-nine. Is that all rear yards adjoining property on Willowbrook Drive shall be visually screened therefrom. By dense evergreen planting in combination with the preservation of existing trees wherever possible.
That's, that's the approval. That's it.
Right.
So that's all I have to use for going out. So I, I, I'd say thirty-one is the one that.
Just so we know, thirty-one is what's the issue this evening?
Correct, correct. I mean, if you want to include the rear far corner of thirty-nine.
Well, that's really not, that's really not the issue right now. It's all she brought before you, and, and this is what you, you've answered her. Based on thirty-one.
Okay.
Okay, um, do you want to, let's wait and see if there, is there anyone else that'd like to speak, um, in favor or against?
Judy, go ahead.
Yes. You have to unmute yourself. Unmute your mic and then just.
Judy, unmute your mic.
Unmute your mic.
Still unmute your mic.
Okay, uh, I, uh.
Address, please.
I want to first of all thank Cheryl for her diligence in following through on an issue. That affects every one of us. Now, her end of the block has more of a problem, but only. Minably more, because the whole block, we came here thirty-seven years ago, and what sold us. Was a, a street that had a dense, beautiful screen of tall firs. Mixed hardwoods, cottonwoods, shrubbery, berry bushes. It was beautiful. It was like being in the country. And every one of us love, have loved that aspect of our street. But now, since, well, of course, there's the ash or, yeah, but I just want to say.
One second, I just need your name and address to record, that's all. I'm sorry, I didn't remember.
Uh, Judith Slater and Jerry Slater. Twenty-six Willowbrook.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, and now, uh, and especially after the development, what we have is in the summer. Some shrubs, and I heard that the village might even want to take those down, not thinking them particularly of value. But they are the screen we have now from the back of the houses on Castle Creek, so. It's, uh, it is a beautiful street, and we love it for its beauty. And I just want to support Cheryl's hard work and the appeal to the intent. That was recorded in the minutes that, uh, there would be screening of the back. Of, of the houses on Castle Creek and the back of. of, of the houses on Castle Creek and the back of their lots, and that has not happened. That has.
I mean, can I?
Happened.
I tell you too that, that, you know, that obviously the remedy to the situation across the street from you is something you need to go to the village board about because if it's, if it's something that was put in by the village board, I mean, that, that would be most sense to take it up to them. But anyway, thank you for your input and I appreciate you coming here this evening. And we're going to ask, is there anyone else that'd like to speak in favor or in opposition? Okay.
Uh, sorry. Um, hi, this is Maureen Solano. I'm at forty-two Willowbrook Drive. Um, and, you know, I understand um, the desire to have the trees, and it does look really pretty, but I also understand that trees die. We've had several trees that we've had to have removed in our backyard, um, very costly. And we've had some trees fall down that we've had to have some repairs done and wires were, you know, pulled out because they fell. Um, and it's a nuisance, so I understand needing to remove the trees. Um, but I also want to say from, from our view, and I know everyone has a different perspective, but from forty-two, looking over to the backyards of Castle Creek, I actually thought it looked really nice when we were able to see the, the back of the neighbor's yard because it looked like they had done some really nice work over there. So taking a walk down our street and seeing, um, the difference actually was appealing to us, to, um, my husband and, and myself. Um, so, I, you know, I know if there's something in the minutes and they need to adhere to them, but just not all of the neighbors think that it is, um, it doesn't look as nice with the trees removed, so.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you very much. Is there anyone else?
Um, William Salin, thirty-four Willowbrook. Um, so I live across from, I, if you, I wish I could pull up the thingy. Uh, but every night, uh, when I come to, uh, there we go. Yeah, I'm here. So fifteen. Every night, uh, I come, I'm sitting in my front, uh, room and every night I see headlights from fifteen coming, peering through my front picture window. And, uh, if there was a screen there, I mean, there's trees, but there's not as many as there used to be. I, my family has lived in this house since nineteen fifty. I moved back into it, uh, six years ago. And, um, it, it's changed since I was a kid, obviously, and, uh, I just wish that I could not have to see that, uh, particular element during the winter months and during the summer months.
Okay, thank you very much for the comment. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else that might speak in favor or opposition?
Hi. Um, can you see me?
Uh, no. I can hear you a little bit. Try again.
She's what? Um, my name is Renee Bordieri. I don't know if you can see me or not. I live.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Renee Bordieri. I live at sixty Willowbrook. I've lived on the street for a little over five years. Okay. Um, so I'm not one of the regulars. However, what I will say is I believe that the Dorans have done a beautiful job. It is so pleasant to look at compared to what was there, and they've planted a lot of evergreens. They just haven't, they have to mature with any tree that you plant. Um, and I've had to have trees taken down on my property also. Um, but I personally feel that it looks absolutely beautiful.
Mm-hmm.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And Amy will do the same thing. Right, here it goes.
Anyone else like to speak?
I would like to. This is Amy Redenberg at fifty Willowbrook. Um, I would like to say first of all that I do appreciate the passion on part of Cheryl and Judy and Billy that have been on this street for ages. I really do. I read all of the minutes from nineteen eighty-nine. Um, and I bought the house here in two thousand and two. And when I purchased this house, I could already see the Dorns' home. So, um, coming in at that time, clearly I have a view of their backyard straight out of my front window. And I, I just like to take a step back from the emotion that people are feeling about this and just say that I did purchase the house have, knowing that that other house was there, and I think that any person who builds a house with empty lots nearby should know that after forty years goes by, there's a chance that something could be built on there. I am very glad that it's not a parking lot. I think that after reviewing the minutes very carefully, the Dorans have actually met all the criteria, so I have to agree with the code enforcement officer. I, I would like to know what the, um, residents who are opposed to the new evergreens would like to see instead. Um, I, because I, I feel like they've really spent a lot of money on putting in several tall, expensive trees. And we've had, we had, uh, tons of damage to our trees, especially in that October storm, which we can't quite replace them overnight. Um, a- at any rate, I'd like to say that, um, according to what I've read, it seems that the Dorans have done everything they can, and if there's some other regulations that I'm missing, I, I would like the board to consider them and for that to be brought up clearly, but for now, um, I feel like, you know, I'm gonna, I, I guess what I'm saying is the current situation is in compliance from what I can tell, and, um, I think that I might have to buy a curtain for my front window. Um, and that might be because I live in a densely populated area where, um, you know, we don't live in the country. I, I don't know. I, I'm gonna mute myself now.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else like to speak in favor or opposition? Okay, at this time, uh, I'll ask you, I'm just gonna throw this open to any board members that would like to ask any questions to Ms. Meyer. Ms. Myers.
Wait, might I ask a question to our attorney?
Sure. Joe Freeze.
Uh, Chip. Am I correct in saying that exceptional development is no longer a thing in the village of Williamsburg?
That's correct.
Am I also saying that this was a condition of a development and not a code or a law at the time that it was adopted in nineteen eighty-nine?
Well, because the code, as it was adopted at the time, authorized the board to impose conditions, just like you guys can impose conditions when you grant variances. My interpretation, well, the reason why I determined that I thought that an appeal to this board was appropriate is because this was a condition that was imposed as a, be, through the authority that the village board had at the time.
I can, I can appreciate that and, and not to put you on the spot, but it was a condition of, of a board that is no longer in office, and we have a mayor that has publicly spoken that she didn't want any part of this because it was old minutes. Uh, did we just dump it on the zoning board?
No, no, if that's, if that's true, I was never, I didn't have any discussion with any members of the Board of Trustees or the mayor about this. This, the only discussions I had about this were with Tim.
Okay.
So you're free. By the way, this board's also, I mean, I, I'll say this was a little, this was a very unusual situation. And it was not a crystal clear case, but this is really the only place I could see this going. And, and, and what I deter, looking at it, it, it did seem to me that the condition had no expiration date on it, so I don't know. And if the, if, if exceptional development still existed, and if the village board of trustees still had jurisdiction over this, I might have reached a different conclusion. Um, but again, it doesn't. This is really the only place I think that it can go. Um, for, you know, for, you know, Tim was obligated to make a determination. He did that. And the only real administrative relief that I think was available was an appeal to this, to this board.
And I, and, and I can appreciate, I can appreciate your, your, your chain of, of thought. Uh, when I was a village trustee in nineteen ninety-three, I can't remember any of the decisions I made. Unless I read something about it, and I'm not sure that we as a body can ascertain or determine what was running through the board's mind when they put these conditions in place. Uh, I, I personally believe that we, we are, we have a just, a dis- uh, justice to the code enforcement officer for not allowing him to interpret this code the way that he saw fit, or excuse me, not code, but condition the way that he saw fit. I, I mean, I'm just saying that I don't think it should have been brought up to the zoning board. I don't think it should have been brought up to any board. Again, it was a condition. He felt that it was adequate. End of subject. Uh, I, I don't understand why there's a repeal on something like this, yes.
Well, I think that when there's a condition that goes into the minutes that becomes part of the government of the village, that we should do our best to maintain those reason, reasonably. We can't put back these big, huge trees that have gone down, but it's not unreasonable for these people to expect that there's going to be some kind of a buffer. We can't, we can't replace the trees that died, the ash trees that died. We can't do that, but the fact that the owners on Castle Creek are putting back a green space or attempting to, I think the question we have now is whether, whether Tim had the discretion and voted the right way or the right way that their effort complied with what was intended.
No, and I. And, and I, let me just be, I, I also, I, I don't think either Tim was being asked or, or you're being asked on this appeal necessarily, I mean, maybe you are, uh, to divine the intention of the village board in nineteen eighty-nine. I think that if the question is, what does this condition mean? And is Ti- did Tim interpret it correctly? Um, there's, there's language here that all the rear yards adjoining property on Willowbrook Drive shall be visually screened therefrom by a dense evergreen planting in combination with preservation of existing trees whenever possible. I don't, you know, I, I know the, the applicant has brought up, um, the minutes, and I'm not saying you can't consider those. Uh, but I think you need to start with first, what does you think that language means, or do you think Tim interpreted that language correctly? I really think you only get into trying to divine any intent of the people who impose that condition if you think that condition's not clear.
We get it. Thank you. I think, you know, the, the only thing that I think needs to be said is that based on the conversation here is that the neighbors, I think, that there should be always a process to appeal a decision. Though I don't have any animosity or any issue with the neighbors wanting to appeal a decision that was made. There's a process for that, and they come here. Tim made a determination. He made his, in his judgment, and the neighbors disagreed. Some of the neighbors disagreed, and they filed for an appeal to ask us to consider it. I don't have a problem with any of that. And I think ultimately it really is, is up to us to now vote and decide whether we agree with the determination and the decision and the judgment that Tim already exercised, or whether we agree with the appeal and take a vote on it.
Agreed. I'd like to make a motion that we, I like, before we, we make a motion, I just ask, I have to ask if there's anyone else that'd like to speak regarding this subject. Ms. Myers, do you want any closing statement?
Am I muted or am I free?
Go ahead. You have some time to do a closing statement, please.
Yeah, I, the only thing I want to say is that, um, just to be clear, the trees that were taken down were not all dead, and if, uh, if they could put big trees up when they first built their houses, and I have to disagree with Amy, I could never see their house. I didn't see their house since two thousand and four because they put big trees up. So that is not a true statement. I didn't even know there was a street there. It was wonderful the way we worked it out. So the trees were not all dead. They took them down for another purpose. And, you know, I, I think it violates what we agreed to in nineteen eighty-nine.
Okay, well, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tim?
All right. You know, I just want to clarify, it wasn't really brought up tonight, but, um, in the letter, just for the record, um, there were two references that were made. One is public hearing minutes. That's where the living hedge stuff was mentioned. Um, that was a discussion for a public hearing, so in my view of this, none of that was relevant because the actual motion that was made was this one from February seventh, nineteen ninety-four. This motion was Chip read, when you go towards the bottom. Um, you know. Yeah. I'm sorry, nineteen ninety, April twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-nine. That number four, that says all rear yards adjoining property on Willowbrook Drive shall be visually screened therefrom by a desk that would be flexing in combination with the preservation of existing trees wherever possible. That's all I have to go off of for what it is. I know she references the public hearing. Those I'm not buying, and that's just, that's just, just to clarify her, but.
Correct, very good.
And.
So, um, at this time, we're going to close the public hearing. Uh, you're welcome to stay on. We will have a decision this evening. Um, and I'll ask for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the interpretation of our code enforcement officer that what has been planted, uh, at thirty-one, at thirty-one, is substantial and adequate and will achieve exactly what the whatever it is, the, the resolution space for the exceptional development of nineteen eighty-nine.
Chip, do we want to be that specific, or do we want to just say that we agree with this decision?
I, I think that's fine. I, you know, it's, it, Joe had made that motion. I think that motion's fine. If, if somebody wants a different motion, uh, or if there's not a second for that motion, we can articulate another one, but I don't see any problem with the motion Joe just articulated.
So the question, do we need to follow the normal convention that we use, which would be to have a motion that approves the appeal, and then we vote, yeah, your name?
No, there's no, no, there, no, I, it, you can do it that way, um, but you don't have to. There's no.
Fine, we're good. Okay.
Motion being submitted by Ms. Fullwiler, motion by Mr. Freeze, second by Ms. Fullwiler. I'll sit there. Um, and the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Freeze?
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Tine?
Yes.
Ms. Fullwiler?
Yes.
Mr. Celeste?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Before I vote, I just want to preface the, uh, or like to preface my vote with a, uh, I'm not muddying the, I'm not muddying the water, but, uh, I remember, I was on the zoning board appeals when these lots came before us, and, uh, they're all, they're all irregular lots. And I remember that we did put some conditions that I can remember specifically screened, so it's something that the building inspector can look into and may give them some fuel either way, depending on if there's even anything in there. Uh, but I vote yes for the motion. So the motion carries five zero, uh, that the building, we are holding the building inspector's ruling. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. We appreciate it. Uh, if there's anything, any other business to come before board here, yes, there's some, uh, a list of scheduled for twenty twenty-one meetings.
Yes, you don't have to vote on that tonight, but if, if it looks acceptable, we can always take it during our, during your year.
Anybody see any problems with it at seven PM?
It's the match, the regular.
No July meetings, no December meetings.
Yep.
Everybody sound, sound good?
Sound good.
Right. Go carry. Uh, make a motion to adjourn.
I so moved.
Motion by Mr. Freeze, second by Mr. Tine. Call a favor.
Aye.
Carry. Thank you, everyone.
Recycle it.